All this meeting in the Harriman City Council, February 19, 2019. The order, before we get started, we'll have a prayer of Councilman Wright, followed by a pledge least to the flag. Councilman Wright?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to recognize the passing of one of our World War II veterans. Ed Collins, I guess most of you know about him, he passed away this past week. Ed, of course, not only was a World War II veteran, but he was the one that was responsible for starting the Stryne Transportation, Stryne Band Transportation. During the 30 or 40 years that he worked in it, he hauled hundreds, thousands to the hospitals. And I could go on and on, there's a lot. He was a fine person, and it's a tremendous loss to us. Shall we pray? Our Father help us to strive to always do the right thing and to live with charity and humility and respect for others. Father, we are very thankful for the way our nation has taken your guidance and made we continue in the footsteps of our forefathers in your direction in all that we do. Amen.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes of the February 5, 2019 meeting. Motion, Councilman Russell?
I second.
Second, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell?
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call girl, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Tony Wright?
Yes.
Need a motion to pay the bills?
Who makes the motion?
Motion, Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second, Councilman Holly, Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion. Call girl, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Tony Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time we'll hear from delegation. If you'd like to address council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Baron Kirk, Harriman Library Board. Give you all an update, we have a library board meeting, lives Thursday night, and Mayor asked for reports from our county, from our meetings from politicians departments. So I'd like to report, we have replaced all their lighting inside as far as the lights that were burned out and stuff, the lighting outside, in case you all, anybody didn't buy the library, we got the outside building lit back up again. We've also fixed the original bathroom that was in the downstairs part that was out of order due to the sun pump and all that that we put in, we've got all that back in place and in working order now. Tammy told you all, at the last meeting, I think that we have, that we were, I don't know if she told you, we received a couple of grants, but we have confirmation, we received grants. One of those will get us, we'll be able to buy three new computers, an upgrade to software on the rest of our computers to Windows 10, I believe is what she said. We're gonna be able to buy three hotspots that you can check out from the library for a week at a time, as well as some classes and stuff from a different grant, and we got money for that. We have, at the last meeting, Councilman Wright asked about our storage shed, we've been raising funds for, I'll give everybody a quote on the price of our storage shed, and right now we've got about $500 towards that storage shed as far as money that we've raised so far for additional storage shed, for down there further. My understanding to be used for supplies and stuff for our youth, their craft projects and all that kind of stuff, somewhere to put all the stuff that they use. We were giving out our bylaws and our library mission to go over, they review them, they update them, we go over them every, minus everybody for three years. So they were giving out for us to take home and everybody review, and we'll go over and at our next board meeting. There's a children's workshop program that I know our librarian, I think assistant librarian are attending this Thursday at Crossfield, which is for the summer reading program, so they'll both be attending that. And Kenny asked me about, we have microfiche down there that you can, you know, the microfiche readers, and he said he had found a company that will digitalize those, so there'll be PDFs where we can add into our web, to the city's website. And it's approximately $50 a roll, and so he asked if we would consider doing a couple of rolls. The oldest roll we have is from, in the 1800s, of Rock County news stuff, and then the second oldest roll is early 1900s from the Harriman record. So we voted, Councilman Wright said that y'all had been discussing some historical preservation stuff, so my follow-up of that as far as money, I don't know, but if the cities got some money to put into it, that's great, but if not, the library board did approve the hundred, $100,000 that cost to do the first two rolls, to be able to get those digitalized and where they can be added and searchable on the library website and the city's website, according to the information that Kenny gave me on that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, if anyone has got any.
Baron, the library that's really good, you did get y'all on that. Thanks. Thank you.
I'd like to just, and I've already talked to you about it earlier today, I'm not opposed to outbuildings. I just, we've got an outbuilding set behind the library, it's a small one, and I had asked Baron, we buy another small one, which is the quote for this one right here, it's a little eight by 10. Before you know it, you're gonna have four or five little outbuildings set behind the library, it just doesn't look good that goes along with a Carnegie library. I would rather buy a bigger building or something and get rid of the one we got, instead of having two or three out there. I'm not for an outbuilding behind that building to start with, but I understand that they do need space to store stuff, and one of the questions I asked Baron was, what are they storing in it that we can't store, you know, somewhere else? And I think a lot of it is our children's stuff and things like that, so, like I said, I'm not opposed to it at all, I know they need storage, and that building can only store so much, but I just, to start putting up four or five storage buildings behind buildings down there, especially at a Carnegie library, it just doesn't, doesn't look that good. And I asked him if we could find something that could go along with that building structure, and I don't know that we can paint something to look like it or something, but when I ride by and I see the little yellow building set behind it, the storage building, it just, to me, it just doesn't, it don't give me that warm fuzzy that I want to have by looking at it. So I've asked him to look for something that kind of would make more sense, even if it's not as, you know, an eight by 10 is gonna fill up pretty quick.
Well, that was, that was one thing we did, quarter of the board meeting, was how much space, you know, that was, because it was like, that was the minimum you need, and they were talking like that was a lot of space, which to me, an eight by 10 building is not a very big building. And the mayor and I did discuss this earlier, and I'm not opposed at all to go into our board at our next board meeting to discuss doing one bigger building, I don't know what's involved of getting rid of the building we have as far as how you can, if you can trade it in, if you have to sell it, if you have to auction it, because I don't know how it was purchased, I don't know how that works in the city scheme, that would be, y'all have to tell me that part, but, but I'm not opposed to it. I like the idea of just having the one building, because that, you know, makes it easier to consolidate everything. But like I said, they do, I know, current building we have, we have some decorations for the different holidays and all that that's stored and stuff, I mean, the problem is, is the library is just not big enough, I mean, even for the library stuff, a little less for extra storage. But, you know, like I said, I'm more than happy to go to our next, with our next board meeting and bring that up by doing, you know, trying to figure out about a bigger building. Because, I mean, we've been raising funds for quite some time, and we've only got $500 so far.
And does it have to be on, on site there?
Yeah, that I don't, that's a library question, library in question, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we've, we've got, you know, like, I know the, let's say, the fire department or something, they, they'll store a lot of stuff here, in some rooms that we've got downstairs, I don't know if we've got any rooms to store something, but I'm just looking at, you know, I know they're out of storage space, and I, I want to help them, just want to make sure that it stays in with what, you know, what we're trying to do downtown and keep that. If everybody downtown starts putting storage buildings behind the buildings, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Like I said, I'm not against it, I love the library, I'm gonna help them. So are you bringing, when you brought this quote, are you bringing this in some kind of recommendation from the board, or?
Councilman Wright asked at the last meeting for information on the quote of this building, so that's the reason that I brought it to y'all, you know, I don't know if, he was asking for it because y'all may have some funds to contribute to it, or, you know.
Would, would you be opposed, and Councilman Wright, would you be opposed for you to get back and look and see what, if we could do something that's just one, that would be feasible, that would go along with the library, and then bring it back before council, would you have a problem with that?
No, we, we mentioned that we really need to take a look, you know, this was a small building, and your storage needs picked up, and what are we gonna do to keep saying, you know, we can do that.
We discussed that also, I wasn't sure, you know, but then, there's been some many things thrown around about what's gonna happen with the HEB building and a lot, because, you know, my first thought was in the parking lot, it's more feasible in the yard to start with, because it doesn't get mushy and muddy and, you know, but, you know, my dream building would be to build something there that actually, you know, had power, but that, you're talking mega bucks then versus a portable building.
So you'll look at some different options and?
Certainly. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything for council?
Okay. There'll be none, council remarks. Councilman Cook?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Johnson?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Russell?
No, sir.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
No, sir.
Councilman Mead?
No, sir.
Kevin, you have anything?
No, sir, just in case you haven't seen it, on Friday, sent out a fairly lengthy, weekly update, so take a look at that, and if you have any questions, you know, be sure to let me know, and I'll try and get the answers for those questions to you. Also, remember coming up this weekend with our strategic planning session, beginning on Friday, I'll have a packet of information coming out to you within the next day or so on that as well. You'll have a copy of the last strategic plan, some information, I think that you will find helpful in some of our, our bigger projects that we have done recently, as well as where we stand with regard to the items on the last plan. And then just for your, your reference this evening, afterwards, if you want to take a, take a look, we've kind of updated the goals and objectives here to color code those, that if they're, if they're green, they're complete, if they're yellow, they're ongoing, and if they're red, we haven't gotten to that particular objective yet, so you can take a look at that a little closer if you'd like as well.
Okay. What time do we start with Friday?
I think it's at four.
Is this pretty close to?
A bit close, pardon me, that's correct. It'll be, I'll give you the exact hours, but it's, it's about four, three and a half to four hours on Friday evening, starting at four, and then about another three, three hours on Saturday morning, starting about 8:30.
Anybody have anything to say, Mayor? Kevin, where we at on putting up our strategic plans?
Just trying to get some good weather to get them up with, we've got that. We've also got 20 dogwood trees that we had intended to start planting yesterday, but weather forecast didn't look, it was a really time to do that, so hopefully next week we'll be able to do that.
And y'all got the routes set out, where you're gonna put the dogwood trees?
For the most part, we've, we've laid out where we're gonna put between 16 and 18 dogwood. Once we get those out, we just figure out where we're gonna disperse the last few, there's several different options that we have available, Garden Club on locations, but this, this first year, we're gonna try to concentrate on locations that you can see from Run Street plus the area around the library. And then next year, we're gonna try and do the same and fill in some of the, the back roots.
Anything else to say, Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I've only got one update real quick, as we discussed in the last meeting about the codes, about what the garden around Harriman, talking to David over the last couple of days, who's been hard at it, so if you all get complaints, I think he is starting to write numerous tickets a day. Just realize that we're all in this together, and we need to support the rules that we set forth and move forward with this to get our city plan back up.
All right. If nothing else, we're going to new business. First, I'm discussing possibly approve, any union to agreement to affirm to develop ADA compliance plan as required by the state of Tennessee. Kevin, you want to talk about this a little bit?
I'll give a little background on it. We, this is a requirement that was initiated by the federal government, Federal Highway Administration. They basically gave the task to the state of Tennessee to undertake statewide, so the state, through T-DOT, has then sent that on down to various municipal offices throughout the state for us to put together an ADA compliance plan. This is something that's been in the works for a couple of years, and there's been different steps and different milestones that you've had to meet along the way, and December of this year is the deadline to have the entire plan in place. It doesn't mean that whatever the plan lays out as items that we will need to correct over time has to be done by December, it just means that we have to have an inventory of those items, and we have to have developed an approach as to how we will address those items in the future. In the beginning, our thoughts were that we may be able to do this in-house, because the first couple of T-DOT sessions that we sat through on this, it didn't seem like it was gonna be a very large project, but then T-DOT brought on an ADA compliance coordinator, and with each session, the scope of the project and what was gonna be required grew and grew and grew, and I'm not sure that anybody really knows exactly what they're willing to accept now, what they're not. But a lot of the cities have been using firms to do this, either engineering firms or other planning type firms. The mayor and I have had several meetings jointly with the cities of Rockwood and Kingston to talk about possibly joining together in one contract, one firm, to do this, the costs divided out to each city for their portion of the plan, but by doing it jointly with one firm, and then being able to maximize their time by coming down and collecting the data, we should all be able to save some money in that process, so that's where we're at at this point in time.
Motion to approve the agreement for the ADA compliance plan? Both. Councilman Wright, second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Holly, Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman Holly?
I'm about to give the vote.
Floor is open for discussion.
What agreement are we affording?
Just fix nice guy, yeah.
I was wondering, I was wondering that question. We, the firm that we've been talking to is Community Development Partners, which most of you are probably familiar with, from, they've written grants for HEB for a number of years, did one, did our open grant, and have done some other grants for us as well. We have a representative from the company here this evening, and so with council's permission, I would say, let him discuss the agreement and whatever else I've left out, the requirements for what, what T-DOT's gonna want.
Sure, thank you, Kevin. That was a, that was a very good summary, actually, so it's, you know, the American Disability Act, first passed in 1990, was updated most recently in 2010, and basically, Federal Highway has, has said that we need to have actual, have some substantive proof of compliance with this, with these, with these laws, and so they have passed down through T-DOT, you know, administration and making sure that, that all of this is fully compliant and above board. And so it is, it is a bit of a process, so there's really two components to it, it's the self-evaluation, and then it's the ADA transition plan itself. Self-evaluation is actually looking at your facilities, the sidewalks within your right-of-way, the public facilities that have access to the public, as well as your policies and rules as a governing body, to make sure that those have adequate provisions for accessibility for those with disabilities. And so we are, you know, we will look at all of those, I have some experience with this, we're not claiming to be experts at, at ADA law, however, we are experts at Harriman, and we do have, I have worked on one of these before, I've worked on several of these before. I do know, I have a good idea of how this is done, I have had a lot of contact with Margaret Mahler, who is the T-DOT ADA coordinator that Kevin was speaking of, so we're gonna approach this at, in the most cost-effective way possible. We have an engineered team that we're working with to help evaluate your facilities. There will be a pub, a bit of a public process, so part of it requires us bringing, bringing together a sort of a steering committee of folks that represent, that contain, has individuals that are, either have disabilities or represent folks that are serving those with disabilities, and making sure that what we're seeing on the ground, what we're evaluating in your facilities is actually in line with what they're experiencing. And maybe we missed something, they can point that out. And so that's part of the process. We then create standards based on, on ADA guidelines, the federal and state guidelines for ADA, both for the right-of-way and for your facilities, and then once all the, all of the discrepancies, all of the, all of the inaccessible portions have been identified, then we create, basically we create a plan. And the plan looks at, what are your budgets, what does your budget look like, where are some other funding sources that could come in, and what could you address year by year? So there is no, they have not promulgated anything that says you have to have everything addressed by X date. Now, you know, if you were to say, we're only gonna allocate $50 a year to making improvements, you know, that's probably not, they're not gonna look on that favorably, but as long as you looked at your budgets and within a reasonable, you know, margin, you are looking at what you could address year by year based on what we see out in the field and what we, what those estimated costs are, then, then that's how you, that's how you move forward, that's how you address it. So in the end, you get that list of facilities and the costs and the programs and policies that need to be updated, and you are able to show compliance. And so by December, we will have that handed over to you and to, and to, to show T-DOT, and it will, it will provide you with full compliance to move forward under federal highway grants. That said, there are also other federal programs that are moving towards these sort of requirements as well, so having this plan in place could really help you out later. For example, with programs through the Department of Energy or the Department of Education, these agencies increasingly are starting to look at, we need to have accessible facilities for, for the public. So that's, that's some background there. Now, in terms of, of the price, we, we have, again, we are not, we are not national experts at ADA, there's only, there's only a few firms out there doing that, but we do have experience, and we have experience with your community, and we're trying to make this as, as reasonable as possible. There were a number of other communities throughout the state that were looked at using, using statewide data, and we asked, we asked those communities what, what they, what they, you know, what they provided for their ADA transition plans, how much it costs for them to produce them, and in general, we heard anywhere from $8 to $15 per resident for their community. And we're coming in at a price of $782 per, per person in your community, and that's, that's based on your 2017 population estimates. And so we're, again, we're trying to make this, and we're presenting that as not to exceed, so hopefully we'll be able to produce it for even less than we're saying, but that's, that's, that's what we say, we definitely can produce it under, and so that's, that is what we're proposing here today.
So would you, were you asking for permission to enter into a contract to do it with this firm, or this?
That is correct, yes, with Community Development Partners. From my understanding, Rockwood has already approved it, Kingston has discussed it, but they have not yet made a final decision on whether to enter into it or not. I have spoken with one of the firm, just to try and get a cost comparison, see what, what it might look like if, if we went with someone else, and without getting into a real detailed look at all of the facilities we have, and this was with an engineering firm, they, they quoted a number of $500,000 to do it.
But did we, do you have to advertise and bid this?
It can be professional services, is my understanding.
Well, that's what I meant.
What, what he's proposing is about half as much as what, what you just said?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that, but the way this presented, from now on, I don't know before I might, you know, step off the plane, but what we're talking about.
It, it would be a professional service, so you would not do it necessarily based upon cost, you would do it based upon qualifications.
So what would approve it?
If you voted to approve this tonight, we would be entering into the joint agreement with, at least with Rockwood, hopefully with Kingston as well, Community Development Partners to produce the ADA compliance plan by city of Harriman, owner before the December 2019 date required by T-DOT. That plan would be in a format that would be accepted by T-DOT, and it would be at a cost not to exceed $7.82 per resident of the city of Harriman.
And what number is that, what census did you use?
2017. 2017, I guess.
You mind what that was?
It was around $6,300.
I figured $6,500.
$6,500.
That's what I'm saying, it's still making you shoot.
It'd be about $50,000.
Yeah, I got $50,000.
It was like $63.50 is the number.
$63.50, I forgot.
I got 6,500 people, 50,800.
And we were figuring about $50,000, so that...
The disadvantage is, is we have to do something, or they cut our fund, they cut our grants and stuff out. T-DOT does not, you don't have, if you don't come, well, you don't have your plan in, then your grants are shit.
Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense, if everything we do, we want to put lots in, we have to hire somebody to tell us how to engineer it, so that's gonna take the place of getting it engineered, so when we go for future grants, we're still gonna pay extra when it comes to the grants for it also.
Still gonna pay extra, but what this is basically doing is like the sidewalks that we already have in place, the buildings that we're in right now, how are we gonna get them up to?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, if we had to replace the sidewalk out here, we'd say, okay, we want to replace it, so we go get the, the quotes, and they say, oh, we had to get somebody ADA compliant to look at it, so we're done at then.
But you gotta have a plan in as to when you're gonna do it.
Geez. Yeah, no, this isn't, this isn't actually project, this isn't prescriptive, this isn't providing anything that, that's, that shovels in the ground. This isn't providing any sort of engineering, engineering level recommendations, this is, this is what the contract is going out to, this is providing, this is providing, it's a plan.
So you're giving, you're giving quotes on certain areas that needed to be approved?
Yeah, exa, absolutely.
This would be, for instance, the outcomes might be... This would be, for instance, the outcomes might be if we have sidewalks and intersections that are deficient, then the next time that we, we pave that section, then we will bring all of those up to standard as part of the paving project. It would still have to be designed at that point in time as to what the ADA requirements are. If it's a building that's substandard, we may say, well, we're gonna budget ten thousand dollars per year towards bringing these different issues up to meet compliance. It would, as I understand it, it would itemize every single facility structure that the city has and its deficiencies.
Yep.
And then we will have an estimate as to the number of linear feet or miles or however we're gonna measure it, the sidewalk.
Yep.
And the number of intersections, and then how many of those are deficient and how many are in compliance.
Yep, and it'll provide a cost estimate for bringing those into compliance.
Now, one of the ways that we talked about, you know, is this being a not-to-exceed number is, and I know Rockwood was very interested in this as well, is whether there are some pieces of the work that they're gonna do that we may be able to take staff and assist them with to cut down on the cost. That might be taking picture of the facilities, that might be getting GPS coordinates at different locations. There's any number of things that we might be able to do that if we can cut down the amount of time that they have to spend on gathering the data, it will cut down costs as well.
What's the name of your?
Community Development Partners.
They're the ones that write the CDVG grants for HEB.
Yeah, we're chiefly a development firm, so we help with community development efforts with communities all over the state.
So you have, you have personnel, engineers?
We have engineering teams that we work with. I, I am actually a certified planner under the American Institute of Certified Planners, and so, and so I would be the project manager and the point person on this, but, but we would be working with, with engineers also.
So are we gonna pay extra for them to come and?
This, the fee you see in front of you is the full fee. We would, we would do a subcontract. We need engineers to get out there, we're paying them out of, out of those fees, so that's the, that's the full amount.
Let me start by saying I totally one-hundred percent support the ADA upgrades. As you all know, my sister's handicap, I understand what all that is, and I also understand that it's the state forcing something else on you, because you're gonna give us prices, and it might be some project that we're not gonna do till five years, ten years down the road, as you can see with other sidewalk projects we've done that took that long. So the cost estimate just blew up from that point, and we didn't get it done at that cost. And then the state's gonna require us to do it because they wanna hire somebody and put them in that position, and then when it comes time to actually do work that we need to be done, we're gonna hire somebody to tell us what it's gonna cost them. But, I mean, I understand it's something we've gotta do, but I just think it's another where the state's forcing you to do it. That is just...
And they're gonna force you to spend money every year doing it?
Yeah.
This is not something you set and wait until you're fixing to go in and redo sidewalks. You've gotta set money aside every year to start project, I mean, to start doing some stuff.
This looks even at, is your website, does it meet the ADA guidelines? I mean, I agree, all that stuff's good, but I'm just saying that to have a plan to tell you that when you get around to doing it, this is, you're gonna have new ADA laws that said, what'd you say, 2010? 2019 now, I mean, you know they're gonna have to be coming out with something in the next couple of years. They can't let anything set that long without having to change it, but, okay.
Now, the other side of this is that it'll also provide you with protections. So, so there is the immediate, the immediate need to do this in order to maintain your federal highway funding, but it also protects you from, it also provides a protective barrier from litigation, both from, from state and federal sources, but also from, you know, citizens, from residents. If you know, if you have substantive proof that you have, you have this plan in place, that you're making this effort, that you have identified these things that need to be addressed, and you have taken the steps to show that you're going to address them. I mean, that goes a long way to showing, showing that you have that in place and protects you from, you know, from those litigations.
Councilman Holly, Councilman Wright, are you still okay with your motions since we know exactly where we're sending this money to?
Been down this road, yeah, I'm comfortable.
Yeah. Motion, second. Any other discussion? What are we looking at, if we approve this tonight, what are we looking at start date?
Imminently, I'm going to, we already have some folks that we're working with in engineering, some engineering folks who've done lots of work in Rome County to get out here and get started on the self-evaluation portion. So we've already got, we've already got draft contract language set up. As I said, this is something that's been going on. We've been building towards this for the last couple of months, working with the, through communities, so it's, it's, it's well on its way. So imminently, and like I said, it's, we have until December, but there's, there's a lot to do, so, so the sooner we can get started, the better.
Let me ask one more question. I looked when I got here, I didn't see it, and I had it looked down. Where, where is the contract? Have we seen a contract that we're voting on?
We have seen a draft of it. I think the attorney needs to review it before we sign off on it.
So can I have this? Y'all's motion's okay, but it will only be good after attorney looks at it and makes sure that it doesn't oversee the amount of money that we said, and that we would, in that draft, it will be completed by December of this year.
I would also like to say, if anybody, make sure you contact your Senator Yeager and Representative Calfey, and let them know that this being the legislation session they're in now, every little thing they vote on has consequences that roll down to the cities. So, you know, before everybody gets excited by voting on things, they ought to look at it a little bit.
Any other discussion? Call girl, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Bee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approval awarding bid for paving a portion of the walking track at David Webber Front Park. I think there's two bids that we've got in our packet. Do you wanna discuss those just briefly before I do a motion?
Yes. This is a, just for the record, an item included in the budget this year. It does appear that the totals will be within the budgeted amounts. We received two bids, one from JB Asphalt Paving out of Kingston, and the second one is pavement restoration of East Tennessee out of Knoxville. The low bid was JB Asphalt Paving out of Kingston. Parks and Rec Director Alan Dikman spoke with four of the five references that they've listed and got feedback on the work that they did for those entities. They were all pleased with the quality of the work that they received. We have received some additional information that we requested from them with regard to their insurance, business license, and so forth. And the, either, either one of the bidders, if you were to award it to them, the final bill would actually be based upon the true tonnage that's used once the project is finished. Estimating that it's gonna be two hundred and eighty-three tons. If it were two hundred and eighty-three tons, then the low bid is, comes out to about forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the high bid comes out fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we don't see any reason not to award it to the low bidder, so that's our recommendation, JB Asphalt.
Kevin, did, did they, did they vote bid on the three-inch depth and those specs? I didn't see that one.
It was in the specifications that they were given, and if, as a requirement, so unless they noted that they were proposing something different than three inches is what they were bidding on.
Yeah, I remember the words below it.
Motion to award JB Asphalt and Paving bid, second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Wright, second, by Councilman Johnson, Councilman Wright, Councilman Johnson.
We do need to pave down there, 'cause that's the main thing. You got some people that like walking on the gravel, and then you've got some that want to walk on the asphalt, so I think that'll really satisfy both of them ultimately. That's all I've got.
Okay. It says portions, what, when you say portions, what are we talking about?
What are we, excuse me, what we're looking at is roughly the area around the War Memorial down to the building where the bathrooms are located, making that loop, and then the loop that's, you know, goes out through the grass field down towards Highway 27 Bridge would remain gravel.
All right, and let me ask one more question. They gave us a price per tonnage, a hundred and sixty-five dollars per ton. You kinda estimated how many tons there was, I didn't see it on their, their big specs. If they know they're doing three inches and they know how big it is, they don't know how much tonnage they're gonna use? I'm kinda confused as to why they can't bid a... I mean, we're just going off of them gonna come back and say, well, we used three hundred ton or we used two hundred and fifty ton?
It'll be like when we pave streets, it's done in the same manner. We get daily tickets, and those tickets show the tonnage that they used that day. We have someone there on site when they're doing the work. The city will actually be doing the base prep work as well as any, if we decide that we need to change out any culverts that go under the walking track before we pave it. And so at the end, we'll total up all those daily tickets, and we'll have the tonnage that they pulled from the plant, and that's what it's paid off of.
Floor's open for any other discussion. Call girl, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Ken Yen-Bee?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. That is all we have on the agenda. Anything else need to come before this, counsel? Motion to adjourn, please, second?
Second.
All in favor of that? Do you oppose lock sign?
Got a workshop.
Got a workshop. A quick workshop.